We will now call a common council meeting of February 20th, 2023 to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Alderman Dukniak is excused. Alderwoman Marshall.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Everybody, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. And tonight, we have Captain Larry Myhach. Uh, will lead us off in the pledge.
The allegiance is a flag of the United States of America to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Larry. Um, just, just a little housekeeping. Um, when you are speaking and you do have floor, make sure your microphones are on. We've had some issues at planning here and there. Just make sure the red light's on that you're being recorded for the minutes. Speaking of the minutes, that will get us to approval of the minutes of, uh, February 7th, 2023. Everybody take a look and when there's no further discussion, omissions, errors, or corrections, motion.
Lorick moves to approve the minutes of 2:07, 2023.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Marshall. Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Stains.
Okay. Under new business, item four is a presentation on the North Bluff Park consensus plan. Uh, with us is Doug Seymour to explain it.
I'll start it off again, Doug Seymour, Director of Community Development. And this is a presentation on the activities that the city's been doing surrounding, uh, what we're referring to as the North Bluff and the planning of the park in that area. So of all the investments that the city's made over the last decade, and there have been many, I think the one with the most potential for real generational change has been the lakefront. And the story of Lake Vista has been well documented. Hope you all know how special and successful that was and is. But the question was always, well, what's next? And there was always land north of there that, you know, one day, I think we all kind of in the background mindset, yeah, that's, that's, that needs to be public. And started towards that route and along that route by acquiring the, uh, the shoreline as part of an earlier transaction. And then finally following up with the acquisition of the remainder of the 46 acres of the Peter Cooper site. And all during that time, we've been working with a team of engineering professionals to kind of plot out what our next step was. And, and part of it really stemmed from the fact that we were, uh, as owners of the property and as stewards of that property and given what we knew to be the condition of those bluffs along Lake Michigan, uh, it really fell to us to be responsible, uh, to be, to rectify that situation, even though obviously the city did not cause that. And we all understand that, but it's the right thing to do. Being stewards of our own lakefront, which is, you know, not making more of it. And we were actually losing a lot of it. And that was one of the reasons why we, uh, undertook the activities that we did. So as, as part of that, the city was faced with a question, I mean, could we spend, invest a good sum of money into the stabilization of that, of that bluff and to that lakefront and, you know, walk away, which didn't make a whole lot of sense to myself and thankfully, Andrew, and thank you, thankfully, uh, the Plan Commission, Parks and Rec and Common Council felt the same way that if we were going to make that major investment, and it's the right thing to do, uh, that we should make sure that that's an asset for the city, its residents, its visitors for, for the next hundred years and provide the access to the water that we never had as a city. Uh, so with that in mind, uh, we engaged a group of resources and I'll introduce you to those folks in a minute to kind of guide us through the process of imagine what could that be. With that, I think I'm going to take the opportunity to introduce Greg Waikamp and Jack Cox, both of Edgewater. We're going to run you through kind of what the process has been to date, where we are, and most importantly, where we're going. We're going to follow it up with, Carly's done a really nice presentation about the survey that we did and, uh, what kind of informs us moving forward. With that, Greg, welcome.
Thank you. Is this on?
Yes.
Is there a light with us that's working? Without a light? Okay, very good. Excellent. Do you want to start with this part and then I'll jump in?
Sure. Uh, went through some of the background before. I mean, this is just some of the details behind it and how we got to this point with Edgewater. I mean, those dates aren't that important, but the important part is to know that, I mean, this isn't something that we're just pulling out of staff or pulling out of just a few people. There's, there's been an initial suretts, a visual preference survey. Uh, we went to the, at National Light Out and it was a very engaging group, give us what their thoughts were with respect to the lakefront. Uh, based on that, we had a couple of designs, conceptual designs drawn up through Edgewater. And you'll see parts of those tonight. Some of them have been refined, uh, such that some of the earlier concepts were really, really cool, you know? Uh, decided that, well, maybe that probably doesn't work real well for what we want to accomplish. So, uh, those presentations were then made to the Parks and Recreation Commission, uh, as well as the Plan Commission. And we just wanted to bring this to the council, uh, given, you know, how important this project is, how amazing this project could be. And we just want to make sure that, that you knew where we are at and knew, knew what was going to happen in the next, uh, next couple of months with respect to not only the North Bluff project and the planning of the park, uh, with the entire, uh, revetment and stabilization, which in and of itself is an amazing project. So, so with that, and we'll have Carly talk about the survey in a little bit, but with that, I'm going to let Greg talk about things that we've done to kind of solicit some public input and how we got the, kind of the consensus plan.
Thank you. So I'm Greg Waikamp with Edgewater Resources. So the, just so we're all crystal clear about what you're seeing tonight, this is a, a design in progress still. This is not a final report there or that you're approving or what we're trying to do is gain feedback. And this has been a community-led process, uh, from the start. As you can see on the screen, um, this was from our National Night Out and the visual preferencing survey, we met with all those little dots where people putting dots on the things that they liked the most. And it's a little tough to see in there, but you'll see different photos and, and, uh, different activities and different suggestions, little sticky tabs. And we talked to just lots and lots of people that night. We met with staff, operational staff with the city, um, early on to come up with these ideas. So we just jumped to the next picture here. So what we're going to be showing you tonight is the process. We started with this sort of evaluation of the site. The key, really key important thing is starting off with the fact that you're, you're, um, we're reinforcing that slope. Number one, first and foremost, let's protect that slope so we don't lose any more, uh, recognizing all the upland site conditions. And that led us to this opportunity. We're creating a three-to-one slope with an armored shoreline to protect that base. Now, now the question here with this task is how do we turn this sort of engineering feature into a really wonderful park feature and make sure that we're, as we're building this, that it's not just about being a revetment, it's about bringing the community to the waterfront? And then linking, very importantly, linking, uh, this whole area down to Lake Vista Park, also back into the neighborhoods and hopefully eventually off to the north. And so we want to have a really interconnected waterfront, uh, and bring as many members of the community as we can to it. So we'll jump to the next picture here. So we came up with a series of concept alternatives and a design suretts. So you're seeing four different plans up there. I'm not going to spend a ton of time on each of them, but I wanted to make the point that what we were doing is exploring a series of different ideas, um, that, you know, some of them came from the community, some of them came from staff, some, you know, we're, our, our process is about bringing ideas to the table and saying, does this work? Does this make sense? And we sort of explore and find the, find the solutions together. And so out of these four different concepts, we pulled the best ideas from the various parts and pieces and moved them together to what we're calling a draft consensus plan, which is what we're going to show you tonight. And so as we jump to that next picture there, um, this is the draft plan. And so this is not the final of anything. It's, we're trying to gain feedback and as we push forward with this, we're going to continue to advance it. We're going to be looking at cost estimates and an implementation strategy and how would you build something like this? So just so you're all aware, the actual base project, which is the shoreline revetment, is actually going to be going out to bid shortly. Um, we've got our permits there, so that's a really big step forward. And all of that contemplates how the park layers on top of that first initial project and how it'll be built in phases. So as we think about this and what you see in front of you is number one, this is a project that would be built in phases over, over a number of years. And there was a bunch of different key characteristics that we wanted to maintain and protect, which is this idea of one, something that's fully accessible to everyone in the community. So we want to have universal accessibility, which is the idea that it's not about a ramp here, a ramp there. It's that the whole entire space is designed so anybody can move through it. Also from a maintenance standpoint, that the staff can get out there and take care of it, for example. So, uh, if you're familiar with the site, um, we're starting back up with the sort of the access. There's two main access points. One is we come in, uh, from the west, um, from, with the car access on the top of the bluff. And then there's also the ability to access the bluff down that valley, down towards the, the intake plant and get down there for staff, thanks Doug, down for staff and also some accessible parking down there. We don't want a ton of parking down there, but we do want the ability for some folks, if the only way for them to get to the lower areas to drive down and park from an accessible parking, that would be an option there. But then when we get back to the top of the bluff, we would actually come in and drive, um, out to an overlook. And there, there's a drop-off there where we'd drop, get people out to the site and you could go out there and sit and look. One of the things to keep in mind is not everybody has the mobility to get out of a car and people sometimes just want to sit in the car and look at the view. So we have some of that opportunity. And then of course, we've got a larger parking lot back, back up into the site. That's taking advantage of a site that's got some, some, you know, remediation issues and that's a good, good use is put parking on that. And we've got pedestrian paths that connect everybody back up to it, up to the waterfront there. So as that comes up, you'll go through that landscape and we're at the top of this bluff where there's that low valley down where that road goes. We're showing a bridge that connects back to Lake Vista Park. We want to have everybody the ability to go, have a signature bridge that you'd connect from one top, uh, from one bluff top to the next bluff top and link all of this all the way to the south. And we walked every inch of it all the way down to the Lake Bluff Park. It's really a wonderful experience, but what we recognize right off is there's not as many opportunities to get down close to the water and the other parts of the park as we'd like to create here. So that signature bridge is something that would be spanning over that cool opening. All the service vehicles would be able to get underneath it, but people would be able to get over. And it's one of those sort of signature iconic spots where you take the pictures and you have the senior pictures and, and graduation photos and all that stuff and weddings and all those kinds of things. So as you move to the north there, we have kind of two primary zones in this park space. Truly three. So the first zone is that sort of, um, the arc shape that you see there on the south end there, that sort of, we have at the top, a series, at the top of the bluff, a series of gardens that actually recall some of the, the Lake Vista Park features. And then you'll see that we have a series of, of spaces wandering down to the shoreline. Now that's a three-to-one slope. It's pretty steep, um, but it'll be a really cool experience to be able to move down that space. And what we wanted to do is create a series of, uh, natural features, natural play features, where if you look at it just as a person walking by, you may go, oh, that's just a beautiful rock garden, but kids are going to get out there and they're going to invent all kinds of cool games and they're going to scramble up and down this hill and, and play on it. And so anytime you look at it, as opposed to sort of the, the Crayola colored play features, this is more of a natural playground with natural wood features, rock features, little grottos, little spaces and benches and seating and so on. So you'll move through it where the parents might wander down the path, the kids are going to scramble up and down rocks. And we'll show you some pictures of that. And then we have those arcs down the side, those pathways that go down. Those are actually stairs that go down. And then there's actually an arced, arced path fishing access that goes out over the water. So it's, it's like having a fishing pier that'll go out over the water and then people will be able to go out there and fish. And again, more pictures. I can imagine people having weddings out on that space and it goes out actually over the breakwater. So the next primary zone is the waterfront edge, that low edge down there at the bottom. And so that whole bottom you see there will have rock revetment. Uh, but what we want to do is instead of this traditional rock, which is, you know, the boulders that you see, this will still be a lot of rock, but we want to do it with sort of more square features. So it creates a series of terraces that that whole entire space is going to be accessible for people to sit on and enjoy a whole series of terraces and people will be able to scatter all throughout it. Some of them actually push out further into the water to create more fishing access. And then there's a path, a maintenance path right along the top of it. The third zone is that whole north zone, which is the largest area. And that's just meant to be as much of a native area as we can. We want to have, uh, deep-rooted native, uh, plant materials that are going to hold that slope in place. And we have a series of main paths that go down for maintenance vehicles, but also for folks, uh, to come down on multi-use trails and bikes. And then you'll see those sort of little squiggly paths in between. Those are what we call the adventure paths or the rambles, where people can walk off and run through those and play games. They can do mountain biking and, and hiking and things like that. So the idea is to have very much, uh, a lot of use for the spaces, but also really low impact, light touch uses that are easy to maintain, but really useful and functional. And then a real focus on native plant materials, focusing on the flyway and the migratory birds and creating this as a really great destination. So if we jump to the next page, we'll show you some images of what this looks like. There's an enlargement of that parking area, an enlargement of the, that climbing zone here. So that climbing zone, you'll see there's a series of terraces if we go back one. There's a series of terraces there where you'll move down as we talked about with the, um, with the rock rambles. You can see those scrambles moving up there. Let's keep on going, Doug. And then there's those, those sloped areas down there with the, with the rambles connecting and a little bit, you'll notice these sort of rock outcroppings that kind of move in and out of the spaces. We're trying to create all these little cool interest, interesting connections where people can wander up and down through the spaces because kids, we want to create, instead of a playground, we want to create a play environment. If we have a space where it's intended and intentional that kids can go out and invent games, they will invent all the games in the world and they'll have fun running around there. So that's what we wanted to do with that. So if we move forward there, so here's some imagery. So when we talk about that signature bridge, and this is just an idea, uh, you'll see a couple of bridges there on the left. The idea that there's a beautiful signature bridge, um, that can be something that, you know, it's, you know, it might be that new iconic vision of what's this community look like? And we're just proposing a couple of ideas of what that could be. There's clearly a lot of thought that needs to go into what that bridge would be and how it would look. A really great opportunity to, uh, you know, we always want to have everything that we do tell the story of the community that it's in, which is why we're focusing on the native plant materials and focusing on telling the stories of this waterfront. And so as we get further into the detail on this, we want to tell the history of the site, all the way from, you know, pre-history of the, the plants, the animals, the materials, the peoples that have lived here, how we got here today and where we're going. So when you see some of these other paths, you'll see the, uh, the one that, to the lower left there by the bridge, just to the right of the bridge, that's that idea of these, you know, simple little gravel paths that go through the landscape, through the native plants. When you look to the one to the right of there, you see that wood overlook. That is what we think that pier out over the water would look like, really beefy, recognizing it's going to take a lot of hits from water and ice. We're particularly good at that. My partner, Jack, said wherever he went, I think he dissed me. Coastal engineering and addressing those wave climates, the wave hits, um, and making sure that that's something that can tolerate that and not be delicate and light, it's heavy steel and wood to tolerate that environment. And then looking up just a little bit, just above that, you know, some of the more garden-like paths at the top. And as you move, where you're seeing more of that rock space down at the water's edge with a path and then these rock terraces. And then, um, just keep on going. Let's go to the next page. There's a few more there. So when you think about those adventure paths on the top left there with the bike paths, the mountain bikers can get in there and, and go right around, um, or people can run in those. And then when you see that middle, top middle picture, that's that idea of these sort of flat rocks. And so the idea of those flat rocks as opposed to the, you know, the bigger, um, you know, rounded rocks, those are really unsafe to climb on because there's lots of holes, whereas this is more of a, of an area that's going to lay down. And it's just as functional in terms of, of shoreline protection, but it creates a, a safer opportunity for people to move in and, and really interact with the water, whatever that water level is. One of the things I didn't mention is in that sort of play area, we look at the top right image here, you look at that play area inside the sort of primary southern zone is having a slide down the slope of the hill. And so we're really not, remember those slides we had when we were kids? We'd climb way up there and you're like 15 feet up in the air and I know we can't do those anymore. Well, you can do these big beautiful slides when they're on the side of a hill because you can't fall off of them, but they're still fun. And so the idea of a big slide that actually goes down the hill, so that's one way to shoot down quickly and then you climb up. You see all the stone, uh, climbing areas around it. That's kind of the idea of the lower left image there is again, a beautiful sort of river of stone that goes up the hillside that people can climb on. And these are the sort of natural play features that we've been talking about is when you see a play feature that's made out of, of wood and materials, it just looks beautiful all times irrespective of how, how it's being used. So that's our idea behind the natural play. And I think one more slide or it may be our last one there. So, so that's the primary vision. We put this out. There's a lot of really great feedback from the survey. We just love to hear from you. Uh, but this is how, where we've gotten today and love to hear some feedback from you either tonight or if you want to email us your thoughts later or talk to Doug and the others.
Yeah. And maybe Greg, if, if you'd prefer, maybe we can just have Carly go through the survey results and, and open it up for any questions or comments, uh, from the, from the council. But I think one of the really cool things, uh, as part of this project, uh, Carly and Carrie designed a survey that really kind of tested some of the things that we've, uh, put into the consensus plan. And if you're familiar with what public participation usually looks like in Oak Creek, uh, we were absolutely astounded by the number of people who responded to this survey, over 1,200? Over 1,200 people, um, which is great and it just shows how people are so very invested and in love with their parks and open spaces and the lakefront. So with that, uh, and drawing upon your great work, Carly, please present your results of the survey.
Of course. So my name's Carly Pearson and I'm the management assistant. So just a little bit of methodology, just to kind of go along with, um, what Doug was speaking about, is that we prepared this survey via a civic engagement platform called Polco. And respondents had the opportunity to react to various elements of the North Bluff Park project. So those play elements specifically, and then those pathway options as well. So we had the survey open, um, beginning January 16th and then closed it on February 8th. And we sent it out via Facebook and the school district, um, also was kind enough to push an email out to families. So we think that a bulk of our responses and our success, um, was from, from those responses. Um, and like we said, we had, um, just over 1,200 total responses and 90% were Oak Creek residents and 31% were District Four respondents. Um, and so then just looking at the pathway options, um, you can see that 71% love them and only 4% dislike. So we thought that was overall extremely positive. And then I just kind of ranked to, um, the pathway options. So, um, people were most, most favorable towards pathway option A, um, that, um, like paved wooded option, kind of similar to the Oak Leaf Trail, if you've been on that. Um, and then E was second. So again, that, um, pier, the boardwalk with the, um, the railed-in area as well. And then C was the boardwalk in the wooded area. And then just a couple of free response, um, just we gave the option to say, you know, what, what did you dislike? What would you change? And a lot of people, 68 respondents had the word "natural" in their response, however you want to interpret that. A lot of ADA stroller accessibility concerns were brought up. And then, um, concerns over upkeep and maintenance, of course. People also brought up lighting of some sort for safety, um, potentially solar-powered. And split comments regarding mostly paved or natural. So it seemed to be, um, a good number of both. And there was also some strong opinions on mountain biking, um, having those in conjunction with pedestrians, um, and then collisions and things like that not being a great idea. And then the initial bridge, um, option, people weren't, um, too thrilled about. They just thought it was a little bit too industrial, but we're working on that. And then the recreation structure options, um, this one, 75% of people loved them and then 7% disliked the options. And the top three options for this one were, number one, were the slides going down the hill. Number two would be the, the rock steps into the water, um, the touch the water element. And then, um, D was the third, that natural play area with, with the downed logs, rocks, et cetera. And free response, there were some concerns over, um, structures getting vandalized, of course, um, concerns over upkeep and maintenance again, ADA, ADA accessibility, more talk of keeping it natural. And also the safety of slides, um, as we'll talk about a little bit later, just people worried about those, those metal slides that folks grew up with, um, and them getting very hot. And, um, also a little bit of mention about like the design component lacking. So I think that people just weren't as used to seeing more of a natural play structure element. And then lastly, I just wanted to kind of highlight some of the general feedback that I was seeing as I was reviewing the results. Again, concern over upkeep and maintenance, very important. People also brought up dog park a lot, potential dog site, um, making the area dog-friendly, if anything. Again, concerns over mountain bike trails separating, um, being separate from pedestrian trails, lighting, um, pathway railings as well, so kind of going along with the ADA accessibility. There was also some mention of small retail, like a coffee shop, a restaurant, a snack bar of some sort. And then again, using an alternative material besides metal for slides. Also was noted were restrooms, a potential sledding hill, and traffic calming measures on Fifth Avenue as well, um, especially if we're going to have more pedestrians in this area. And then the imperative connection to Lake Vista Park and concerns over public safety being able to.
Thank you, Carly. And with all that, I think, uh, a general description of, of next steps, we can talk about that. But first, I'd love to get your, your, your remarks, your initial, uh, feelings about the plan, you know, what we got it right, what we got it wrong? Uh, and just, uh, just building upon your input and the input of the Plan Commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission, as well as all the public input that has taken place to date, we will take that back and we'll, we'll refine this even further and come back with a, a, a more detailed plan. That'll be sometime, hopefully late March, that we can do that. And we look forward to really working this plan in concert with the revetment that's, uh, work that's being taken place this year or so. In essence, a lot of what's being done as part of the revetment projects really sets the stage and sets the bones, if you will, for this park development, which will probably follow, uh, the year after. So probably, uh, '24, '25 is when the park would be developed, which is still, you know, and it's not that far away and it's, it's just some remarkable progress from where those properties have historically been. So with that, uh, Mayor, thank you. Council, thank you. Love to get your comments about, uh, what's taken place thus far.
Hey, Council, our turn. Anybody like to speak?
Well, within my district, thank you. And the, the comments I got back were all, all positive. So I, I didn't, I didn't even get the slide one. So I was kind of surprised to see that in the survey that came back. I was also fortunate enough to, and I'm going to thank Sue Win and just real quickly, um, I had the chance to address the Wisconsin Coastal Advisory Council on Thursday of last week, virtually instead of in person, which was a little disappointing, but, um, I think the progress, when you start to show the pictures of before and where we are now, that's the story. We need to keep, keep, we need to keep those early pictures of the, um, industry and what it looked like after the industry was gone in the, in the forefront.
Yeah?
Sure, why not? Uh, thanks Greg, Carly, appreciate the feedback and Doug. Couple of things came into my mind just as I looked at that too. And your, your partner back there probably can answer this better. The, I, I really find the, the revetment, the, the blocking extremely interesting, especially like anyone who's gone on the surf fest and attempted to use the shoreline there, you know, you, you see how ridiculous that is. So the fact that you're coming up with a solution that's usable, how are you going to plan for the lake level? You know, we've seen this lake fluctuate literally about two or three feet in the past couple of years. So what if it goes back up? What if it drops further? How are you planning to address that in there? There's one thing you can talk about. The other thing, important in the whole thing, because we've, we've seen a lack of it all along the lake on, on this side is actually being able to get people to the lake. You know, Bender Park, you know, right now it's, it's a useless park because the boat launch doesn't work, so that's silly. And there's a little beach there. So that's the other thing. The other thing that percolates in my head is what are you going to do for, I, I don't The other thing that percolates in my head is what are you going to do for, I don't remember if it was there or not, I don't I don't recall, people coming from the water to the park itself, how are you in boats? Is there a solution to that? Have you have you thought about that at all or?
Well, let me let me take those in order. So water levels, first of all. So historically, Lake Michigan moves up and down about six feet. Six feet is your historic level. So we set a record low back in twenty thirteen and we set a record high in twenty nineteen. So only six years from a record low to a record high, and that is about a six-foot variation. That is typical. We've been keeping records back to nineteen eighteen. So when you think about that, we we are very in tune with water levels with everything we do because that is a critically important thing. People say, we've lost all my beach, my beach is gone. I'm like, no, your beach is still there, it's just underwater. So one of the things that when we think about this, the revetment design accounts for both high and low water levels. And so that is that is absolutely integral in everything that we do with our coastal engineering practice. We also keep in mind that not only do you have those typical water levels, you also have what's called wind setup. And so you have a big wind, you can have an artificially high level. It literally pushes the surface of the water up. It's a bigger deal on the east side of the lake because the prevailing winds come from the west. But you can have a sage when that stops and all of a sudden it's literally like water sloshing in a bathtub all the way across the lakes. If you've ever heard of a sage, you can suddenly have the water level come up one or two feet. It's not like a tidal wave, it's just like the water just comes up. It's really, I've been in one and it's bizarre. So we design around all of those things. So the the revetment plan accommodates for that. As far as bringing boats directly to the site, we we aren't accommodating any kind of a docking situation here, primarily because of we don't have any access. Any type of dock structure you put out here has to address the fact that we're going to see very serious waves here. So my partner, Jack, does all that coastal engineering and looking at that. You wouldn't be able to come up to that that pier structure and and get off on your boat, for example. That needs to be higher up in the air. It'll be actually elevated quite a bit because we don't want it to be hit by the waves. Particularly what I always have to think of is it's easy for a designer to come up with a beautiful thing. And then the first question you have to is, what does it look like after ten hard winters when a block of ice the size of a VW bus is thrown into it by a wave, right? And so we keep that in mind. So we build everything very, very strong for that. So building a dock that would accommodate a boat in this location is pretty impractical. So we're not doing that. We actually also talked about creating a little beach area. You have a couple of beach areas to the south. And you actually have, if you don't know this, a really beautiful little beach on the north side of the water plant. If you haven't walked down there recently, there's actually a gorgeous beach on the north side. So we didn't want to create another one of those in here because it's a pretty significant maintenance issue. It 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 could be accommodated, but we hadn't really thought about bringing boats directly to this as a mooring location. But we did think about it very much as as this is a waterfront gateway to the community. I'm a sailor, so when I do the Chicago to Mackinac race, we're going up and, you know, we're always looking at smoke stacks. We know what that's this one and that's this one. But if you come up the shoreline and see that bridge element or some of these other elements, we want people to know that this is Oak Creek and here's where I am and I can see the school destination. So there was a question in between those two.
No, there's two other things. Obviously, the bridge connection, I think. That's the whole the whole lakefront access.
Exactly.
And I know Carly said there was some strong comments on the bike stuff, but it's important to make sure you integrate, be able to integrate. Folks on bikes are going to be important.
Yeah.
So somehow you got to solve for that.
Yeah, and you had mentioned the other one was was access down to the water for. So that is one of the keys is that path network that you see there is goes all the way up and down at an ADA accessible slopes. And so they're also wide enough that a maintenance vehicle or a police vehicle or, you know, if if we need emergency access down there, they can drive down along to the water plant, the existing road that's there, and go along that water's edge. And then they could actually get all the way back up to the top. So they can get top and bottom with emergency access. One of the issues is always cell coverage. Once you're down below that bluff, it's very difficult to get cell coverage. So that's a thought from a technology standpoint. Do we want to look at some kind of a repeater so that there's a way to get that call for help out?
Rather than fiber rate.
Yeah. So definitely looking at those things. And, you know, and again, in in the context of here, this is this has more of a of a passive approach. This idea of more of a naturalistic look, we're really focused and this is what we heard from the community, is this whole idea of of we we don't need to overdo the architecture. What we need to do is have this great experience about why why is this place so special? You know, folks come, there's a place called the Magic Hedge in Chicago near, it's not Montrose Harbor. And it's, of all things, it's an abandoned Nike missile site from the sixties. And it was closed off and hidden behind fences for thirty years. And it now is like one of the most incredible bird habitats ever. And now people go to this place called the Magic Hedge and birders will come there and they've seen like a hundred and fifty different species there. So some of these things that could draw people to your community and and take advantage of this sort of experience and and creating some of that habitat, we think would be a nice touch. And certainly, we heard that from the community.
Great, Chris, anything?
No, I I they got all my comments at the Parks and Rec meeting. All positive.
I'm good, thank you, Mayor.
Greg?
I I'm a big fan of the the concepts that you showed. I've seen a couple of different versions through planning. One question I do have on an earlier slide in the presentation, kind of the early feedback, it looked like the number one comment or the number one thing was swimming or access to the water. I I know you explained the that that's not feasible in this location, most likely.
We've got those those, the stones are designed so people can get there and sit. But the swimming aspect of it immediately got us into the whole lifeguard aspects and those kinds of things. So that's as much of an operational thing. It's still, it's something we can, I mean, this is still a plan and process, so.
Sure. But the second item, entertainment and events, has there been discussion of? I'm not thinking like a grandstand, but any type of small stage or event space where somebody can might might hook up an amp for live music or anything like that?
Can you go to the enlargement of the south space, please? But one of the things that I think could be really cool, one more, please, there we go. So one of the things that I think could be really cool is this space here, that whole hillside is a whole series of terraces of stone. And all of that edge is stone. So I think you could actually have somebody performing out on the breakwater. And and that this whole hillside is almost like an amphitheater. Now, we we want to be careful with this word amphitheater because it immediately conjures up concerts with fifteen thousand people. It's not that. But you sort of have this natural feature where people could sit and and watch and enjoy the fireworks or whatever else is happening. You could have some of those events happening on a small scale. Once you go down the path of amphitheater, we we did one in Decatur, Illinois. It's either an event that you program and you like commit staff to doing it and you're, it's a full-time job, or you create a space that's really designed for it. It it can occur naturally and sort of organically in the sense of small band performances from the school or wedding events or those small little gatherings. And we're creating spaces where that can occur naturally. There was a thought and a comment on the coffee shops or those sorts of things. One of the things that clearly, if we were to look at something like that, and I love having those in parks, it's one of the things that Europeans do really well, they activate parks with little restaurants and and things like that. A way we can do that here in a very, it's sort of the sort of organic retail is the idea of of either a food truck or like a almost like a cart that can show up on peak days. And it's there that something that a vendor comes in and does. I don't know how we feel about food trucks in this community. Some communities love them and some are like, absolutely not. My point is, is a commitment to a business like that can be a really risky venture. And that's a way that somebody could come in and say, hey, we're going to test this idea. We're going to bring this out on the peak weekends for a summer and see if that makes sense and if that can build up over time. So that might be a way to address that in a way that's low cost, low commitment. And how do you find the right spot for it? That'd be a tricky thing. I just thought that was an interesting comment from the community. That's a good way we found in the past to accommodate it.
And then the last thing, I don't remember it ever being brought up previously, but it looked like there were a lot of comments about a dog park. Obviously, you're not going to put that on a slope. But if there is any opportunity to put it up towards the top, I think more now than ever with us unfortunately losing the the dog park on Rossin due to the airport, taking back their land.
So there's a couple of different strategies for dog parks. The traditional one we're all used to is the fenced off area and we have a small for small dogs and those kinds of things. There's a strategy that New York City uses where they just take a space of a park and it's designated off-leash during certain hours. So that is another completely different approach that might be contemplated because it's very low cost. It's about signage and it really becomes about enforcement. So you might, when you look and you go south, you've got some huge open spaces up there. That might be an opportunity to say, hey, look, on Saturdays from nine to eleven, this zone is designated off-leash and it doesn't require any significant infrastructure in the sense of fencing and things like that. So it's a little tough. You know, I know with my dog, my dog would love to go tearing up and down these hillsides and go zooming around. So that is a way to do it. You might designate certain time periods that this is acceptable off-leash. That's one strategy. I you're right, I don't know that I would dedicate a a dog park in this zone because it's so steep, but I certainly know dogs would love to explore and do that, so. But that may be a better a better better accommodated to the south when you've got those huge areas. Because I don't think we've got those huge areas fully activated as much as they could be, that might be a good opportunity.
Thank you. I'm going to just going to do three short comments. Andrew, I'll give you the last word. This plan, I think, really gets a lot of things right. First and foremost, we need to stabilize that bluff. That's really the important thing going forward. And it accomplishes that. Secondly, opens it up to the public. And third, it keeps it to a natural state. We don't need to build Disneyland down there, anything like that. And it provides connectivity over to Lake Vista. If we can work something out with the water plant, treatment plant, we can go north as well. It'll get us all the way to Bender. We really have a jewel here on the lakefront. I think this is a really nice dynamic.
Thank you.
I really like the features that are in there. It all into what it is. Like you said, it's a fluid plan over many years. But first and foremost, we really had to provide protection of that bluff and it gets us some much-needed parking. So I really like what's what's being presented. See where it takes us, but those key things, I think those were the three most important elements of the entire plan. I think you hit them all.
Thank you.
The public, I think, recognized that, so.
Yeah, we do, we we had some earlier concepts, had some really big, big design features. And people like, eh, not here. And we totally respect that. And I think that's, I'm really happy with where we got. And it does, I would say this, if we can work out something with the water treatment folks from an infrastructure cost standpoint, getting around that edge, most of that infrastructure exists. So I'm not a hundred percent sure on what their concerns are. But if those can be overcome, it would it would be a reasonably affordable thing to do to extend that connection around outside, hopefully, so.
And it really gives some diversity to our park system. It doesn't have to be with Lake Vista. It doesn't have to be an expansion on Lake Vista or Bender. So it's it's really nice to have that diversity down there, so. Andrew?
Supposed to have the last word, Mayor, but I'll I'll reiterate a couple of points. And first and foremost, I just want to thank the Edgewater team. I know, you know, we've been very, very successful with our brains in the building, but also over the many, many years with environmental consultants, environmental attorneys. And to add Edgewater recently, you know, we're not just doing the bluff park plan with which with Edgewater. The stability plan is something they're actively working with us on as well. And your team, creative, on point, I think. I've only heard good things from from the staff that have worked with with your your team. So thank you for that. And it obviously showed in the in the vision and care that you took to hear the community and and the staff and now the elected officials after the boards, committees and commission members. But one thing, early on, we had to make the decision. You talked about maybe some of those superstructures that were there, where there was a large amphitheater option. Through the pairing down process of this, we as a staff, and I think engendered by the Plan Commission and the Plan and the Parks and Recreation Commission, really said, you know, we have a lot of, we we want to, we want to keep this more natural and less commercial. We have a lot of areas to program in the city, the area south of IKEA, Abengine Park, Drexel Town Square. To to further dilute that, we we thought we would be running, you know, kind of a lot of things on the fumes as opposed to really targeting our commercial and and formal activation or purposeful activation out to the lakefront as well. So that's really where we went down this more natural pathway. And I think that's what we saw the public really like to see in this plan as well. But like you said, Mayor, you know, this is going to be in phases. And just to manage expectations for the city staff, if nothing else, the public listening tonight. You know, this is a multi-year plan. The Council did provide for a budget to determine what phase one of this is in addition to the bluff stability project, what phase one of this is, and really begin designing so we can start delivering on some of these assets in, as Doug mentioned, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. And it's important to note that this is going to be a multi-year process. It's going to be a multi-year financial plan. But the bluff stability project and the initial park design, phase one design, was really made all possible through a funding strategy that the city arrived at. I think it was, was it last fall, Max? Much much to Max's credit, coming up with our TIF donation strategy. So we had all these really big plans for the lakefront and we knew we had this bluff stability project that we needed to tackle. And for us to come up with a with a funding strategy over the next ten or so years to do this utilizing tax increment donations from other successful districts, not on the general back, on the on the backs of our general taxpayers, was really important because it allowed us to tackle the bluff project. I mean, we're we are actively losing this bluff. So to kind of coalesce all of these visionary things and and all of the work that's been done to get to the remediated state that is Lake Vista now acquiring property and moving north with a really visionary plan for our public for a hundred years or more to come. You know, to have a a financial plan where we can actually execute on on some of that now is is really important. So that I that's, I'm proud of that, that we were able to to deliver right away on on some of these projects, so. With that said, Mayor Dan, I think you said all that needed to be said. Had a couple of points in there that you mentioned, so I won't regurgitate those. But just again, thank you to the the city staff, the Edgewater team for, you know, pining away at this over the last, you know, nine months and being at this point right now.
Thank you very much. Your team has been phenomenal to work with. It's such a collaborative process and it's been great from all the start, I mean, Doug and Sue and everybody else. But there's too many to mention, you guys know them all. But just really appreciate the opportunity and and look forward to coming back in a in a in a little while here with taking this farther, cost estimates, implementation strategy, grant strategies, all those sorts of things. So looking forward to seeing this go move forward.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Okay, that was very, very interesting, good news. Moving on to new business, item five, consideration of a motion for a memorandum of understanding between the City of Oak Creek and the International Association of Firefighters, Local eighteen forty-eight, regarding Articles eighteen B and thirty-two B of the labor agreement. Axe?
Max Gagan, Assistant City Administrator and Comp Controller. Before you tonight is a memorandum of understanding between the City of Oak Creek and the International Association of Firefighters, Local eighteen forty-eight, regarding Articles eighteen B and thirty-two B one of their labor agreement. So back for some background, in mid-December, the President of Local eighteen forty-eight reached out to city administration and asked if we would be receptive to making some adjustments of to Article eighteen B, which is holidays. Specifically, the way the contract reads currently is they're mandatory to sell back three holidays, so seventy-two hours for twenty-four hour shift. And that happens within forty-five days of the calendar year. When you take those seventy-two hours, add them onto a regular paycheck, you're talking a pretty significant payout of hours. So certainly resulting in some more federal and state tax withholding, you know, just how the payroll system works. It would all be treed up at the end when you did your tax return, but it's just taking out more upfront. And, you know, asked, talked to them and see what they proposed. And they were looking to spread that instead of three holidays on a single pay period, can we spread it out one on three consecutive pay periods, but still within those first forty-five days? And then as well as the second provision of that article says they can sell up to seven holidays that remain. So they could either schedule them or if they're not scheduled by the end of the year, they're paid out before December first of each year. And, you know, they asked if instead of having up to the seven, just beyond, again, one paycheck, can they schedule to sell those back throughout the year if they don't have them as PTO? And again, those are the things that we thought were agreeable. Certainly really putting the onus on the membership to manage their own holidays and their payouts. We did recognize that some of this could add a little bit of additional administrative burden for the fire department administration, just to have their staffing software set up, especially on those first three holidays. So we did a request if we can make some adjustments in how the monitor pay is made. And there was a process of reconciliation, whether or not it would be paid through accounts payable versus the payroll process. We were able to come to an agreement and adjust Article thirty-two B one. So that monitor pay would be on everyone's regular paycheck taxes withheld. And that really ensures that we're in compliance with IRS regulation on taxability things, goods and services. So once we proposed that, both parties were in agreement on both of our needs. We did take it to the Personnel Finance Committee on February eighth. At that time, they forwarded positive recommendations to the common council to take action, approve MOU. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Steve?
I wasn't at the meeting, but I had the luxury of reading all the material tonight and I think it's very reasonable. Thank you.
Yeah, just thought from the personnel committee level meeting, I appreciate Max and actually Local for working collaboratively, actually coming to a decent solution, you know, fixing an issue between contracts where it doesn't rise to the level it needs to be part of a bargaining agreement that works for, favor both parties. Fix these little quirky things that kind of interfere the process. Nice solution.
Oh, would agree a hundred percent with you. It's nice to see, so, and it makes sense, as Steve said, so. There's no further discussion. A motion on five.
Still move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Oak Creek and the International Association of Firefighters, Local eighteen forty-eight, regarding Articles eighteen B and thirty-two B sub one of the labor agreement.
Marshall will second.
Roll call.
Elderwoman Marshall?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Item six is consideration of a resolution approving the Flock Group Inc. service agreement. Item six is consideration of a resolution approving the Flock Group Inc. Service Agreement and the Flock Government Agency Agreement. With us tonight is Chief Stecker and his crew to explain the flock system.
Good evening, Chief Stecker, Oak Creek Police Department. Tonight, I'm coming forward with what is phase three of what I brought forward at the July common council meeting when we had the original MOU for services so that we could access their information. We've been working on this, and the reason why it took to this point was I had stuff in my mind that I'm aware of where we could utilize cameras at. However, we needed to do more research to see what was actually viable, and also with me tonight is Lieutenant Andy Ahern and Dan Cronko, who's our crime analyst. And spend a little bit of time to make sure that we are deploying cameras or looking to deploy cameras to places that are going to be meaningful and we're going to actually get use out of. So we boiled that down to ten cameras, one of them being a, an additional flex camera. The more important thing about the cameras though is that they are both passive and active, and proactive, I should say. So if we have information that's out there that's updated, I believe, four times a day from the state for any of the wanted vehicles, we'll automatically get put in as a hit list, and those can come across our dispatch center to let us know exactly what vehicle it was at what time, which is virtually immediately when it happens, and which location it was in their direction, so we can get officers in the area there to handle whatever might be going on, or items that we're looking for from crimes that have happened in the city. The other part of it is for items that do happen, we can go back after the fact and look within the thirty days. They only keep information for thirty days to see what's there so that we can develop leads and hopefully follow those up. The reason for the locations is those are the highest locations that we have right now for vehicle thefts, theft of vehicles, theft from vehicles, retail thefts, and our criminal damage areas, so they're spread out. We have them on Thirteenth Street, IKEA Way, four of them around Drexel Town Square, one at Thirty-two and Elm, and two right off of Lake Vista Parkway. I would be happy to answer any other questions that delve into this, because I know that there's a lot of surface material, but I'm sure that there's specific questions that council has.
Questions for Chief Stecker. Greg?
I, I don't think I asked a specific question last time, but I know that there are, there's at least one privately operated flock system.
I, I would be happy to answer it. So we know of at least one in the area, I believe it might be in your district. We know of several private businesses that are going to it. One of our retail vendors in the city, they're, actually have a corporate-wide policy that they're going to have flock cameras on every one of their premises. We have a local healthcare facility that is also in our area that is pushing them out in their worst areas, and will be continuing to build them out on all of their properties. So those are also built in, and we get access to all of those as well. We do have several too, and that might help, that border our city. We're kind of surrounded by a lot of jurisdictions that have these cameras right now, and we have access to that information. But that doesn't necessarily help us with items that are specifically happening in the city. So you may or may not notice that Twenty-seventh and Ryan, Twenty-seventh and Drexel, Twenty-seventh and Rosson, there's interest to put one at Twenty-seventh and College. So we're trying to work with those, and those are specific places for some of those jurisdictions. We need to look at what's purposeful for us.
Thank you. Steve, anything?
I, I just, I just want to make a comment that, you know, we, we have this perception that these cameras are going to be an invasion of someone's privacy, and, and it's pretty well explained that, that, that they won't be, and the material is only retained for thirty days. So I know there will be, there will be folks out there that might think, think that. And this may or may not be germane to the, to the flock system, but I met, I was talking with the chief earlier before the meeting started, and, and I made a comment to him, I says, I was just amazed at how many residents in the city have Ring cameras and Ring doorbells on their residences, I mean, or, or a variety of, you know, different manufacturers. So the, I mean, these cameras are just out there all over the place, whether they're private or, or public, and, and there hasn't been any people making any alarming protests over the fact that, you know, private residences have these Ring, Ring cameras that are watching all four sides of their houses out there, and, and they're providing that information to the police when there's, when there's some sort of, uh, some incident. So having said all that, I think, I, I think these are a great investigative tool for the police department, for what all that's worth.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else? Ken?
Thanks. David, we talked about this the last time. Obviously, I have significant concerns over the whole system of a publicly organized system. Has a very insidious incremental degradation of our. By what Steve has to say. Private property, the whole, that's from private property, what the, public property and governments organizing surveillance. I, I know it's, with, policing standpoint, I don't argue incredibly handy tool, but I, I really have concerns. Privacy standpoint, I just don't abide by the fact that, you know, this is the same kind of thought process that allows red light cameras, speed cameras to become accepted part of doing business, expected part of life, just because you own a car, you have a cell phone in your pocket. Now, they're required to do, live life in an urban area in, in modern America, it's just part of the deal. So it's, it's, uh, that's right where I really come from, and, um, you know, there's a couple of things in, in your report that I, there's two, two things in particular you say about, and then they don't, they don't reflect on your organization. Talk about, especially where these things are located, around DTS, IKEA Way, retail thefts, theft of vehicles. You know, that in and of itself is happening, you know, Oak Creek now just is, just actually contributed funds to fund a prosecutor, the DA's office to address this, you know, that is, you know, not a, that is a prosecutor, prosecutorial issue in this metro area. Failed to put people accountable when these things have been arrested multiple times or not, taken out of the public sphere.
I, I don't disagree with you on that, Ken, I, I agree with you. Our, our job is to catch them.
Well, hopefully this position is going to help solve some of that problem. You know, we're, we've committed significant money to help fund that position. Also, the other thing on the back page is, you say this is going to severely, without this will severely limit your investigation. We're currently investigating, so obviously we're doing something, so without it, it's neither here nor there, but it's not going to, not going to detract from your current position.
Sure, well, I, I have one that I, I guess will help, and it's very relevant. So last night, an ATM was broken into in Drexel Town Square. An ATM was broken into in Drexel Town Square. We don't have that vehicle that, that person was operating at that location, but had we been able to go back and start looking at that, that gets us that person that much quicker.
I understand it, like I said, I don't deny it, it'd be handy to have. I'm just saying that people should have to think seriously about, because this hap, this is going to happen everywhere, and it already is happening. People are relinquishing their personal liberties and freedom from this is constitutional kind of stuff. Doesn't necessarily get done to local government very often, but this is, this is seri, these are serious issues that you, people just are relinquishing for the mere fact that it's, it's handy and it's useful. Yeah, and the one thing that really does irritate me in this proposal is this mobile unit where it just can be used, kind of, as you guys see fit. I don't necessarily abide by that at all, so it's, especially if, I don't know, people have the expectation that they're going to, they're, they're going to, a vehicle's going to be surveilled just because they go to the agency. You know, I'm not sure if, you know, you can answer that, whether we're currently doing that or not. To my knowledge, we don't employ them, but.
So we don't have any AP, Alper units right now?
Yeah.
And what?
I understand, but I, I, I would not support owning one either.
Okay. I, I, I understand your concerns.
That, that's where I'm coming from. I, I really, I find this just incrementally, I, I don't want it.
Okay, I, I don't, I know that we've discussed it in the past, and I, I respect your position on it, I truly do, and you should be looking out for everyone's rights on it. And our number one thing is law enforcement is to make sure we're preserving everyone's rights. And that's what this model is, is not to just go in and let's just look at what Ken's doing or any other person's doing. There's got to be a crime, and we're looking for the specificities through those things.
Government would not, is typically not allowed to surveil its citizen, strictly by fiat, by doing it through a third party, makes it no difference. That's the whole kind of, you know, the federal government did this through the wireless carriers for tracking COVID. Sent to do that either, and you have, you know, it's, it's the same kind of concept, or that, that really is what kind of the crux to my concern.
I get it. I'm not going to get into semantics of what the federal government does.
Well, you know, lots of governments do stuff with.
Yeah, we're not, we're not looking to track people constantly and surveil them.
But it's, it's similar. You, you know where people are, and you can tell where they're, and you can search for that.
Okay.
Chris, anything?
I don't know what it's that.
Okay, Steve?
Chief, in the, in the information that you, we, we were provided, it mentioned that, that mobile unit could be used, and I think you mentioned like events and stuff like that. And I remember going out to the Walworth County Fair, the Rip Fest, and they had those mobile cameras that they were able to, to provide secu, additional security out there. So is that something that you think in that, it, it like for National Night Out or fireworks or something like that, where you could deploy that mobile camera and?
I think that we have one event during the year that brings in people that are tied into gang ties, and we would like to know what they're doing at that point, and right now, we have another agency come in with their unit and track everything, or Milwaukee Ken with their cameras. This would be deployed instead of having another agency come out for that item. When we have things that are going on, where we have a lot of catalytic, catalytic converter thefts or vehicle thefts are going on in an area, this gives us the opportunity to put that into that location to hopefully give us more information to get the people that are doing these things.
Thank you.
All right, no further discussion? Or questions? Motion on six.
Lorick moves to approve Resolution number one, two, three, eight, eight, dash zero, two, two, zero, two, three. Resolution approving the Flock Group Inc. Services Agreement, Order Form, and Flock Government Agency Agreement.
Kirkowski will second.
Roll call.
Elder man Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Okay, item seven is engineering and its consideration of a motion to authorize engine, the engineering department to enter into a contract negotiation with Benesh for the design services of the Sixth Street Bridge over the Oak Creek. Matt?
Evening, Mayor and Council. Matt Sullivan, City Engineer. Before you is exactly what he says, a motion to consider giving engineering the right to enter into contract negotiations with Benesh. As you recall, last council meeting on February seventh, council authorized us entering into a state municipal agreement for the design and construction of this bridge. This is just the next step take. We did put out proposal requests for qualifications, we received three. Three members of our staff reviewed those, they all came back with the same agreement on who they felt was the better suited consultant to perform this work. Then forward that on to the state, the state did agree with our consensus and our process, and we're bringing it forward to you for agreement and giving us permission to enter into those negotiations. Any questions?
Steve?
If you can remind me, what's the timeframe on when this work might get done, generally, you think?
So we're looking in design as soon as possible. Probably this year to get within their fiscal year. Construction is slated for twenty-five, that could be shifted, depending on how they run their own program.
Compliments on, on, on a project that's only going to cost twenty percent for the city. That's, that's really, that's pretty good. Thanks.
Oh, that is great. Kudos to staff to get eighty percent of the design costs covered by the federal government. Way to bring our money back. Thank you very much. No further questions? Motion on seven.
Kirkowski will make a motion to authorize the engineering department to enter into a contract negotiations with, with Benesh for the design services of the South Sixth Street Bridge over Oak Creek.
Lorick, second.
Roll call.
Elder man Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
And item eight also engineering is consideration of a motion to proceed with the design of a roundabout at the intersection of West Pootes Road, South Liberty Lane, and South Wood Creek Drive as recommended by the Board of Public Works and Capital Assets.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you, we have a motion to consider authorizing engineering to enter into contract, or not contract, but to move forward with the selection of a roundabout that was recommended by Bob Waka last week. As you recall, this intersection has gone under a study and analysis, starting in early twenty twenty-two, kind of late twenty twenty-two. Been working with Grafe Consultants on this. And we've kind of worked through the process to this point where we've reviewed four different alternatives. I kind of have a slide presentation here, you all have packets up front, need them. So I'm going to kind of run through a quick presentation here to just give you a background. It's a lot easier to summarize what we're speaking about right here, and then we can go through with questions if you have it, and then. So the existing intersection, as we're all aware, is Liberty and, and Pootes, just south of here. Approximately eleven thousand vehicles a day travel through that intersection, that's all four legs together. Posted speed limits, thirty-five on Pootes and twenty-five on the two minor approaches. The only stop control or control in this intersection is stop control on the minor approaches. Minor intersection modifications in twenty seventeen, if you all recall, we had a project that was tied together with our annual road project where we improved and added the left turn lane, which was eastbound to northbound, and it did more of a protective left turn there. So some of the crash history you see here was taken from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one. I'm kind of pulling out the two major ones, which were eight right angle, which is what you consider like a T-bone, so someone trying to make a turning movement and hit. And then seven singular. The singular ones were primarily tied to the drop lane as you're heading westbound, where it's the right turn. Either people misjudging their speeds, not paying attention, I guess, to signage or pavement markings, and either hitting urban gutter or running off the road, the primary ones there. So level of service, which is what we look at for functionality, inefficiency of an intersection. This time right now, we have level service F on the minor approaches, which is mainly the delays entering the intersection. Currently, you want to be at a level service D or better during peak times. So we looked at four different alternatives. We're going to speak about one right now, which was the traffic signal alternative. So within this alternative, the new lane configurations for eastbound, had a dedicated left turn, right turn, and through. So really, nothing's changing at this point for the eastbound, westbound, there'll be no change either. South and northbound, we'd restripe for left turn and shared right through. Pretty standard for any kind of typical or standard signal intersection. We're also improving our pedestrian crossing, which was mainly on the west side of the intersection, we'd actually be adding crossings there to connect the west side sidewalk on the minor approaches. This type of work here does improve our level of service for the intersection, the level service of C or better on all approaches. One thing to note on this is the signal warrants, which we look at, which is the manual uniform traffic control devices, which is referred to as MUTCD. We go through nine different types of warrants. None of those warrants were met at the design year. Five to ten years after the design year, they were met after that point. Very important to put in consideration here, so typically, recommendations are met within five years or less when we recommend a signal at those warrants. Also, a signalized intersection, we don't feel in, nor do our designers, would address our major accidents, which are your right singular, because we're really not changing anything at this point. The next alternative that we reviewed, actually, the next three, we can kind of go through. So we looked at single lane roundabouts, full size like we're showing here. We also looked at two, what they call compact roundabouts. The two compact roundabouts actually failed prior to design life, so we just kind of pushed them aside. Going to bring them forward as far as our recommendation. So the single lane roundabout alternative, so our single lane configurations, east, north, southbound, we'll all have our single lane entry. And then westbound, we would keep the right turn, but we'd make it a bypass lane, and then we'd have the single lane entry into the roundabout. We'd be improving our pedestrian and bicycle crossings on all legs again. One thing to note on here, and it did come up in Bob Waka, the. One thing to note on here, and it did come up in Bob Waka, the pedestrian crossings and roundabouts are actually behind the one car that is prior to, uh, entering. So they're always behind the first car. And the purpose of that is, is because the driver in the first car is always looking left and right. Um, so by having that one car behind him, it does allow the pedestrian and the drivers to have more of an eye contact and notice when they're entering. Um, level of service on all approaches were improved. One note on the, um, eastbound entrance for level service during AM and peak M hours, they were at level service D. If you did have a chance to read the report, level service at D has a delay roundabout of twenty-five to thirty-five seconds. Level service of C on a signalized intersection is twenty to thirty-five seconds of delay. So same amount of delay, just a different level of service and a different qualit- qualitative aspect when you look at roundabouts versus signals. So keep that in mind. Um, and obviously this is a recommended alternative and there was actually just minimal right away purchase that we, uh, required here, and that was mainly to facilitate our sidewalks, given us that terrace and that separation between the road. Um, another point, cost estimates. So generally speaking, the traffic signal is seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, some change. What that number actually includes is the minor amount of work or the minimal amount of work to get in the signals. So any kind of left turn lane or right turn lane improvements, then the signals themselves. No other additional work would be done in the intersection, no other approach work, no other through lanes or anything along those lines would be accomplished with that seven hundred and sixty-six. If you were to include the intersection through the influence area, which is a quick idea, it's where any turn lane develops. So where the left turn lane or the right turn lane start, that's where we consider the influence area. Um, that would be an additional four hundred thousand approximately. So your total would be over one point one million. Um, then you're gonna have some yearly maintenance costs, electric power knockdowns, equipment failure, et cetera. Um, so the single lane roundabout estimate was about one point two six. This includes the entire intersection, total reconstruction from start to end. And this included our real estate, real estate consultant of about twenty-five thousand. You have enough area to do this. Maintenance costs are basically for your standard, it really ever changes. Standard. So then I just kind of wanted to, I know roundabouts are kind of little taboo, a little different. Just want to give you some frequently asked questions and some of the answers that we were able to dig up. This stuff was taken from the information, um, was all taken from Wisconsin Department of Transportation website. So one of the questions and they have is, do they save lives, uh, roundabouts? What they found is forty percent in decrease in fatal and severe injury crashes. Um, head-on and T-bone collisions are generally eliminated simply because of the way you enter a roundabout. Round, you're coming at angles and different things like that. So it does reduce your severity and limit slows. Um, obviously, it's those severe crashes because of lower speeds. Typically, you enter roundabouts at fifteen or less. You're gonna have a lower speed. Do roundabouts reduce congestion? Guess the quick and easy answer is yes. Um, the delays are reduced by almost twenty-five percent, and you really only need to yield. You don't need to stop, you don't need to wait, you just keep moving. The beauty of, uh, roundabouts and the efficiency when they're appropriately in the right spot. Are there environmental benefits from roundabouts? And the answer is yes. Vehicle emissions and fuel consumption are reduced, and that is simply because it's a yielding process and not stopping and waiting and having your cars idle through the changing of lights. So one good thing here, we found, which was interesting, is a study in, uh, Virginia of ten intersections where they changed it over from signalized to roundabouts. Showed a savings amount in more than two hundred thousand gallons of fuel per year. So that's on average twenty thousand gallons per intersection. So if you think about that at three dollars a gallon, it's sixty thousand dollars it saves the users. It's an important thing to think about. It's kind of where I'm at with the quick and dirty background on this and, and the report. Um, I'm open for any questions that you guys are gonna have. I know, I probably will, so.
Okay. Uh, Steve?
Sorry, Matt, that I'm doing so much talking tonight, but, uh, I don't think, uh, Pute's is not a truck route, is it?
No, it's not.
Okay, so, um, I like the full-size roundabout idea and, uh, I, I'm sure it can accommodate the stray tractor trailer that might find its way lost on Pute's Road, uh, not much of an issue.
No, there will be a ten-foot truck apron. So on the interior part of your roundabout, there'd be ten additional feet of concrete.
Okay.
Would allow that tractor to, or truck and trailer to track its.
Okay. Yeah, I, I'm sure that, uh, if those of us that go to New Berlin can, can navigate that, uh, hellish roundabout at, uh, Morland Road and I forty-three, I'm sure we can certainly adapt very well to, to roundabout on Pute's. And, and you know, when you come south on Liberty, and you come up to that stop sign, you look to your left, I think the, the grade of Pute's is a little lower, and, and I'm surprised there weren't more uh, close calls, because I mean, you, you, you really can't see Howell from, uh, from Liberty, because the road seems to be a little lower, and then all of a sudden you're coming up a little incline. Next thing you know, you got a car there and you're trying to get out into the intersection. So, you know, at least that's my, uh, non-engineering perspective. Okay, thank you.
Greg? Um, no real concern. I do like the idea of the roundabout there. Obviously, something needs to be done in that area. Is there, I'm assuming traffic will just back up, but is there any concern with roundabout that close to the railroad tracks? And they're quite active and traffic backs up a lot there. Will this, I guess, improve the cross streets when there's a train and people are blocking the road? Can they still get through somehow?
Well, it, it, that, that is up to the driver.
Okay.
Um, that can happen at it, whether it's, uh, signalized or roundabout, probably more likely to happen with a roundabout, simply because if drivers choose to back up through the roundabout. Um, anybody that is heading westbound still has that option of the right slip lane to go north. That will not be impacted at all. Um, if people do choose, you know, or, or do get stuck, they always have that option of continuing through the roundabout, though, to clear out that intersection. So there are more options, I would say, with the roundabout, um, when that does happen.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, one, one other point you're gonna want to make here, too, is after the train does clear, it's gonna run much more efficient and clear out quicker as a roundabout versus a signalized, because there will still have that delay. Still gonna have the switch over from northbound and southbound to east and west, so there'll still be additional delays and it won't clear out as quickly as.
Thanks.
So that answered my question.
Yeah?
So I, we, uh, we had a very thorough discussion last week at the Board of Public Works. Been on in this for a month or two already. So I think it's, uh, is the best solution to a problem that needs fixing. Even though, you know, we, we spent some money back in two thousand seventeen, right, Matt?
Correct.
Try and temporarily fix it. We knew all along we were gonna do it. And we've, we've abandoned ever doing Pute's four lanes west there for the time being. That's something that ever comes to the fore. Again, we'll have to readdress this, but this is the good.
Uh, Chris, anything?
Well, everyone that knows me knows I'm not a fan of roundabouts. But I also grew, uh, through this process and learned a lot. So, um, I think the si- single roundabout, uh, is a best solution and um, I look forward to, uh, when it starts working.
I'll agree. Uh, Matt laid out all the cases. The more and more I use them, the better off we are with them. They do work. They just, plain and simple, they're efficient and cost-effective. Matt, I do just have one question. If you have that slip lane going north as you're heading west on Pute's, and you can slip and go up Liberty, you're coming through the roundabout, heading north from Wood to Liberty, and you're just crossing half of that. Um, is there a median or something? What stops people from?
Yes, there, there'd be a median separating between the, the slip lane and the actual through exit.
So, so once you commit off of Wood in that roundabout, you can't go straight north?
Can't go straight north. So you'd come around and you'd go straight north. So the, the right slip lane.
Right.
I'm not very good at these things.
No, hey, you're on the right slide, so.
Yeah, so the, the right slip.
Wouldn't be constant all the way up.
No, no, the right slip lane would probably have a yield also.
Okay, okay.
We haven't gotten to those weedy details yet, and this is more of.
Okay. I, I'm sure it'll work and it's fine. It just kind of looked like a, something could happen there.
Yeah, so we, we, I mean, we can refine those a- as we get through that to address some of those concerns.
Great, otherwise, um, good work, so. Any further discussion? If not, motion please.
Chris, go ahead, go ahead.
Clark moves to proceed with design of a roundabout at the intersection of West Pute's Road, South Liberty Lane, and South Wood Creek Drive as recommended by the Board of Public Works and Capital Assets.
Kuzakowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
And item nine is consideration of a motion to authorize the engineering department to enter into a contract for professional services not to exceed eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars between the city of Oak Creek and Grave for the design of the roundabout at the section of West Pute's Road, South Liberty Lane, and South Wood Creek Drive.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a follow-up to your last motion, um, to basically allow us to go into our phase two design contract with Grave. Um, they did commit to the eighty-nine, five, eighty. We have funding for that available in the budget this year. We're just looking for recommend, or basically a motion to move forward with the design.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none, motion please.
Clark moves to authorize engineering department to enter into a contract for professional services not to exceed eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars between the city of Oak Creek and Grave for the design of a roundabout at the intersection of West Pute's Road, South Liberty Lane, and South Wood Creek Drive.
Kukowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
And item ten is the license committee. I'll turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski.
Thank you, Mayor. I trust everybody's had an opportunity to review the items on the common council report. Does it, does anybody have any questions, cares, or concerns? All right, seeing none, Kukowski make a motion to approve the various license requests as listed on the February twentieth, two thousand twenty-three license committee report.
Clark seconds.
Roll call.
Alderwoman, Marshall?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
And item eleven is our vendor summary report for February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. The amount of one million, one hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-three cents. Of this total, four hundred thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirteen cents will affect the twenty twenty-two fiscal year, with the remaining six hundred eighty thousand, five hundred and four dollars and thirty cents affecting twenty twenty-three. Um, please take a look and direct your questions to the appropriate person if they're available.
Mayor, I have one question.
Yes.
Uh, Max, can you explain number thirteen on the, uh, list for me, please? It's the, uh, thirty-four thousand dollars to the school district for twenty twenty-two mobile home fees?
Certainly. So my understanding is that is a true up of the portion of the lottery credit that is a portion of mobile homes. So uh, mobile homes, the way personal property works, it's like we, they pay like monthly fees instead of property taxes. How that it's assessed, and then a portion of those fees have to be remitted once the lottery credit is settled, which at the end of January.
That makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Greg?
Or, um, sorry, I lost it. Item number nineteen, the fencing at, uh, Meadowview Ball Field. You know, I, when we originally discussed that, I know the, the school district said they had fencing. Were we able to use their fencing, or is this? Were we buying all, all new fencing, you know?
Would not know offhand.
Okay.
Alderman, Lorik, and Lorik, I know through the Parks and Recreation Commission, the preference was, uh, expressed at the staff level of not mixing and matching. So I, I would suspect, although I can't verify, that it was probably new material.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, motion on eleven.
They'll move to approve the February fifteenth, two thousand fourteen, two thousand twenty-three vendor subreport in the amount of one million, one hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars, forty-three cents. Uh, of this total, four hundred thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars, thirteen cents will affect two thousand twenty-two fiscal year with the remaining six hundred eighty thousand, five hundred and four dollars, thirty cents affecting two thousand twenty-three.
Marshall will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And item twelve is consideration of a motion to convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, section nineteen point eight five, to discuss the following. A, section nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub C, to discuss the performance evaluation and employment contract for the city administrator. B, section nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub E, consider an amendment to TID number eleven finance development agreement for Elm, Emerald Row Phase One, Second Amendment to TID number eleven finance development agreement. And Phase Three Agreement for Emerald Row, Phases Two and Three, and TID number eleven finance development agreement for Emerald Row Phase Three Parcels A and C. And C, section nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub E, to consider an amendment to tax increment District Number Thirteen Finance Development Agreement with F Street OCLV LLC, a tax increment District Number Thirteen Finance Development Agreement with F Street, OCLV NT LLC, and a tax incremental District Number Thirteen Finance Development Agreement with OCLV MF two LLC, chart commons.
Mayor? Uh, Gale will move in, uh, yeah, Gale will move to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, section nineteen point eight five, to discuss the following. A, section nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub C, to discuss the performance evaluation employment contract for the city administrator. B, section nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub E, to consider an amendment to TID number eleven finance development agreement for Emerald Row Phase One. Second Amendment to TID number eleven finance development agreement and Phase Three Agreement for Emerald Row Phase Two, Three, and TID number eleven finance development agreement for Emerald Row Phase Three Parcels A and C. C, section nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub E, to consider an amendment to tax incremental District Number Thirteen Finance Development Agreement with F Street OCLV LLC, a tax incremental District Number Thirteen Finance Development Agreement with F Street OCLV NT LLC, and a tax incremental District Number Thirteen Finance Development Agreement with OCLV MF two LLC. Kuzakowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
We shall now convene in closed session and resume at its conclusion. Thank you. We will now consider a motion to reconvene into open session.
Gale moves to reconvene in open session.
Marshall seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
And item fourteen is consideration of a motion to take action if required.
Thank you, Mayor. Gale will move to, uh, approve the city administrator employment agreement effective February twentieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Marshall seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Um, item fifteen is, um, consideration of a resolution approving amendment to tax increment District Number Eleven Finance Development Agreement with Emerald Row LLC.
Thank you, Mayor. Gale, uh, Gale, uh, will move to hold resolution number one, two, three, eight, four, dash zero, one, one, seven, two, three, to date effective March seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Marshalls? Marshall will second.
Roll call.
Alderwoman, Marshall?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
And item sixteen is consideration of a resolution approving an amendment to the tax increment District Number Thirteen Finance Development Agreement with F Street OCLV LLC.
Marshall moves to, to approve resolution number one, two, three, nine, one, dash zero, two, two, oh, two, three, approving the amendment to tax increment District Number Thirteen Finance Development Agreement with F Street, OCLV LLC, and tax incremental District Number Thirteen Finance Development Agreement with F Street, OCLV NT LLC. with F Street OCLV NT LLC Town Homes Parcel and tax increment District Number Thirteen Finance Development Agreement with OCLV MF two LLC, LLC, as partial, parcel, Lake Shore Commons.
Gale will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lark?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And before we get to adjournment, just a reminder, tomorrow is an election day. So polls will be open in the morning. And continue on till what time?
Eight PM, seven AM to eight PM.
Seven AM to eight PM, so. Don't bring us to adjournment.
Marshall moves to adjourn.
Lark seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lark?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Okay, night, everybody.